...to my left. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We've got a call in town.
Ron Fruit.
Here.
Karen Tepley.
Here.
Tom McCarthy.
Here.
Rachel Schultz.
Here.
Melanie Walters. Doug Martnick.
Here.
Steve Downs.
Here.
Ryan Cairns.
Here.
Meeting was properly...
Okay.
...reform and it's...
And we're properly...
Sorry, everybody.
Thank you. Next is approval of the agenda. Before we do that, I'm going to rearrange the order of things. The first thing I want to do tonight is the appointment and confirmation. We need to elect a new member of the Utility Commission. There are two candidates here, so we'll do that first. And then I want to put public comment way ahead of the vote on this thing or the discussion anyway. So change the order to appointment and confirmation, public comment, items for discussion and action. For any further changes, that's pretty much everything on that. Otherwise entertain a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
We have the motions, or a second. Was that Steve? Motion and a second. Any further discussion of the agenda? Hearing known on the favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That one's carried. Okay. It's time for the council to elect a new member of the Utility Commission. Mr. Mike Nice's term has expired and he is not going to continue. So we've got two excellent candidates, Sarah Schultz and Brian Jones. You don't have to stand, but raise your hand, please. Right there and right there. All these people, see Sarah and Brian, thanks for coming on tonight. Okay. So we've done this before, and now is the time. If there are questions up here for the two candidates, and I don't know where the microphone currently is. Who's got the microphone? If we could get that to... To... Sarah's in the front. If it's on.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll start here. We've met Sarah before. Does anyone have any questions for Sarah? If not, I'll ask one, a simple one, because there are a lot of people here who weren't here when we did meet Sarah before. It's really simple. Your interest in serving on the Utility Commission.
I would be happy and proud to serve on the Utility Commission.
Yeah. Just trying to help the city. I remember you told us last time, trying to find a way to get involved in local... In one of your local cities. Any questions for Sarah? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Jones, please come on. I'll just have you introduce yourself, because we didn't do this with you before.
Good evening, everybody. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Brian Jones. Been here in the city all my life. Raised our family here. I've had the opportunity to work for the school district for 47 years. Thirty-seven of those years, I've been the director of operations and maintenance. I've also had the opportunity to be a member of the Richland Center Fire Department. I've been there 43 years. Thirty of those years, I've been the assistant fire chief. Five of those years, I was the fire chief. I'm making a drastic change in my life and our family's life. November 3rd, I am retiring from both. And I'm looking for a way to serve the community. I thought this might be a good way.
Any questions for Brian? Okay. Doesn't have to be complex, and we're in front of everybody, no matter how we do this. This is going to be really easy. We're going to vote, and it's real easy. You say Sarah or Brian. Okay. Now just start on my right with Mr. Ron Fruit.
Brian.
Karen Tepley.
Uh, Brian.
Tom.
Karen.
Rachel.
Brian.
Melanie.
Brian.
And Doug.
Sarah.
Steve.
Brian.
And Ryan.
Brian.
Okay. Brian Jones is elected to the Utility Commission. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir, for being willing to serve. We're not done here, but for the moment, we are. All right. Next is, let's see, items for discussion and possible actions. Story Field Pre-Development Agreement. So, I'm sorry, public comment. So what we're going to do here, I have the stack. That's it. I don't need anymore. That's enough. What I need you to do, we're going to limit comments to two minutes, just to make sure everybody gets a chance to be heard. And I'm going to make one exception, and that is for the first speaker, because I know she has a message from the Story family with her tonight. And so I'm going to begin with Shirley Steiner, who's got the microphone.
This is from the two Story sisters, Susan and Anne Marie. My sister Anne Marie Story Johnson and I, Susan Story, stood on the edge of Story Field a few weeks ago, soaking in the blessed quiet of the neighborhood. The two soccer nets were in the center, and with all of the rain we'd received recently, the grass was a vivid green. We had a nice chat with the neighbor, and then along with our spouses, met the man as he described the plan to develop the screen space and change the focus of Story Field. As you might expect, we were deeply saddened to hear the plans to build duplexes on this property, but we understand that the needs of a city can change. Our dad's history with this place happened a long time ago, and many of you may have no idea who he was or how this name came about. Our dad had an amazing athletic career culminating in his induction to both Monomahin High School and University of Wisconsin Stout Athletic Halls of Fame. He also had a stellar coaching career of several sports, starting at Stout, while he was also playing basketball and ending here in Richland Center. It was here, in this lovely little town, where he was hired in 1941 to teach industrial arts and where he started the track team. It was here where he had many successful award-winning track squads. And it was here where the field was named in his honor, following his death, just two days before his 50th birthday. We have certainly grieved our father's death for a long time. It has always been a hole in our hearts. But Story Field has always been a treasured memory, along with the Richland Center class of 1963 that did so much to get the field named in his honor. These are the things that have helped ease our sadness. Hearing of its possible demise so suddenly has brought back a lot of emotion. And now this vote has moved up two weeks. We had all planned to attend and address the council and community in person. However, this hurried schedule has prohibited our attendance. We understand that this is a difficult, tough decision, and we know that it's not our fight to fight. However, we do request a seat at the table should you vote to develop the property. We would like to help with the green space in any way we could. And we would like to help you continue to honor our dad, as you know, as we know you would want to. That's something we suspect we all can agree on. Sincerely, Susan Story and Anne Marie Story Johnson.
Thanks, Shirley. Okay. I'll do this call out, and before you get the microphone to you, and we've got two minutes, please. Mr. Greg Peterson.
So why can't we just have a vote for this on this, what's going to happen to it? I mean, I got 227 signatures on my own saying they don't want it. I'll bet you can't get 227, uh, do what? So why can't we have a vote? Aren't you supposed to do what the town wants?
Mr. Wilson.
So we operate in a representative democracy. The electorate elects representatives, who then vote on matters on their behalf.
That are supposed to work for us.
They're right in front of you, and we're doing this the way it's supposed to be done. They've heard from plenty of you, and they're going to make their decision like they do on every other matter.
Aren't you supposed to do what the town wants? Not what a bunch of you guys want?
It is for the city council, which is the decision-making body for the city.
Yeah. Why not the town people?
Because that's not what the law states. It's a representative of the public.
Maybe the law... Maybe the law have changed.
Okay. Okay. Did you have more?
No. You don't listen anyhow.
I'm... You have the microphone, please. Okay. Alfonso.
So I have a couple of questions for the council members here. So first one is, I'd like to know, did any city council members or anyone on this here in the council group advise any public, community members or organizations that Story Field could not be used up to this point?
I did not. I don't know if anyone did.
So no communication was sent out to any entities here within the community that could not be using this field up to this point?
I did not. I don't know if anyone did. I did not.
So my question is for the whole council here, not just you mayor.
I did not.
So there is word that communication was sent out. Not quite sure if it was via email, via mail, what it was. But community members were instructed, advised not to use the field. If that is city property, why is that being orchestrated that way? Is my first question. My other question is, I know at the end of last meeting, we discussed possible, you know, alternatives. Was anything discussed since then? As far as other options, modifications to the proposed development?
No.
No?
There haven't been any that came forward.
Okay. And then my last question was already mentioned, you know, why is the community not having a vote on this? But you explained, you know, the way it is done, but to me, that doesn't make sense based on the comments that the council, yourself, made that you are here to do what's best for the community. The community wants to use their voice, right? And they want to be heard, and they feel like they deserve a chance here to keep something that the majority probably wants.
Okay. Thank you. Larry, come on in.
Thank you for letting me, allowing me to speak. I had to take a few notes here, because I'm old and I forget things, too. Can't even read my own writing. The city obtained that property from the school district for the cost of $1. In other words, the school district sold it to the city $1. The city is going to pay, or the gentleman who's doing the rebuilding is going to pay $1 back to the city. And as a result, this gentleman is going to put up the entire construction, the street, the curb, the gutter, the lighting, the water, the sewer, at his expense. As a result, when this is done, my understanding is that in the neighborhood of, oh, seven, huh? Was it $700,000?
Well, it's, I mean, this is an estimate until we get a praise, a set...
Anyway, there was a good-sized chunk of money, tax-wise, that the city and the county will share. Another alternative, another thing. Pardon? I thought somebody asked them. The 16 units is going to benefit the entire city. And by this, I mean, the school district is going to hopefully obtain more students. The hospital nearby is going to maybe have more patients. And every merchant in town is going to have more, a few more customers to do business with. I took a drive up there. I hadn't been there for a while, and there's two big trees. My understanding is those trees will not be removed. And when I was looking from there, from the north end down into the field area, the trees were blocking more than those houses will ever block, because the houses will not go up over the street line. Anyway, am I done?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyway, I highly recommend that the council do this. And one last thing. If this passes, I would suggest highly that in honor of Mr. Story, the street be named Story Field Drive, Story Field something.
Thank you, Larry. Ruth Wilson.
Hi. My name is Ruth Wilson, and I want to thank you for letting me speak this evening regarding Story Field. I'm not exactly prepared, because I thought this meeting was October 7th. So I'm not quite sure why it's tonight, but I'm trying to be prepared. I am opposed to any housing development at Story Field. This is a beautiful green space, and it would be really sad to lose this. Story Field is used by all ages for various recreational, healthy activities. It is used for soccer games, flag football games, scouting activities, playing frisbee, softball, baseball, kicking field goals, walking the old cinder track, which is a quarter-mile track, and yes, the remnants of the old track are still there, if you look and you know where it was. And of course, the hill for sledding. When one side of the hill is full, as it often does with slitters, they go to the other side. People probably use Story Field for other purposes, but you can see from my examples just how much Story Field is used for activities to keep us moving and keep us healthy. Side note, there was a notification to soccer kids that they could not practice there anymore on August 4th. Just a side note. I agree that we do need more housing in Richland Center, but I think there are some other building sites available. There's the panoramic apartments, which I believe there's supposed to be two more apartments built, and each one would have 40 to 45 apartments. I'm not quite sure what's happening with that, but it's supposed to be. The Richland campus and the fields behind the campus would seem to be a very nice building site. There are several vacant lots on Orange Street, not where the Cobblestone Hotel will be, but as you drive from the Quick Trip area toward Prescott Park, there are lots at the intersection of Orange Street and Union on both corners. The whole block from Orange Street between Union and First, Orange and First, Orange and Second, Orange and Third, and Orange and Fifth, where that old mowipin factory is. Church Street and Eighth Street, Central Avenue between Seventh and Eighth, in the middle of the block. Central Avenue and Sixth Street Corner Lot, 300 block of Main Street across from the added touch floor. Jefferson Street between Union and First, corner of Union and Jefferson, where there is a sign that says ENS Development. These are just some examples of vacant lots that possibly cadet building. Yes, they might have to be rezoned, but I don't know how you do that. Also, there's neighborhood housing. I know they're presently working out of home. Imagine you're in communication with this organization. Another concern is the amount of water that goes down Valley View, because we live up in Valley View, and there's a lot of rain. When it rains, it snow melts. You know, there's that huge storm sewer drainage tube that goes under Story Field. How is a builder going to navigate around that tube? And also, I talked to a neighbor that says water does spill out onto Story Field, even with that drainage. Also, years ago, there was an irrigation system in Story Field to water the field. I don't know if that's still there underground or not, but someone should know about that. So I just want to thank you guys for allowing me to speak and for listening. I'd also like to thank all of the older persons that talk to me on the phone. Your time and understanding is appreciated. Please do not allow this green space to be lost forever to a housing development. Story Field has been used by all ages for many years. Please let us continue to enjoy Story Field.
Thank you. Mr. John Clare.
Hello. I'm John Clare, and I live on Eighth Street. I'm a retired high school administrator and science teacher. And I'm in favor of the project going forward. What a small town like Richland Center needs is jobs and housing. And we are very, very short on housing. Even when we moved here in 2001, it was hard to find a house, and it hasn't changed much. And we need housing for folks to live in, and I know there's some connections with a lot of people with Story Field, as there was a practice facility for both track and football for many, many years. But in future generations, that will all be forgotten. And this project is a very, very good deal monetarily for the city and will provide housing for many generations to come. After all of us in this room are long gone, even the younger people, those houses will still be there. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Shelley Dunn.
Hello, everyone. First of all, thank you for your service on this community. I once sat on the city planning committee, so I understand it's not an easy job. You know, emotions in the way a lot of the time. I am not in favor of this development. I do live up by Story Field. It is not because I don't think it will look nice. I think the buildings would be very nice. I don't think it would be unaesthetic. And it's not because I used to run track there that I have some sort of sentimental tie. I just think it's a space that needs to be kept green for all the reasons Ruth mentioned, as far as just everyone in the community that uses it for different things. Is it used 24/7? No. But neither is Prescott Park, neither is a swimming pool, neither is North Park. But it is used, and it's valued. I'm all for housing. My dad was a member of NHS committee for many, many years, weighing crap, sorry, I don't know if you guys know him. So, you know, I grew up knowing that this is an important task. But like Ruth said, the Panorama Estates are building up another multi-unit apartment building. They're maybe not within the city limits, but I believe there's still lots available out past Sonny Johnson's for building. There's a new development going up above Allison Park. I just think that other options need to be looked at first. You know, if a few years down the road, we get to the point where we have so many people coming in that we need to do it and look at it again, okay, fine. And maybe an opportunity will come up again. I feel like we're being rushed to make this decision based on this developer's timeline, and this is a big decision to make in a rush. The other thing is, I had a classmate call me this morning. Her husband is a real estate developer in Madison. They are interested in talking to the council about possibly buying Story Field, leaving it as is, maintaining it, making a large monetary donation to the city, and paying as needed. This just came up today, so that's all the information I have. But just an idea that there are other options, and to maybe not be so fast to move on this. Thank you.
Hello, pal. I'm well grown up getting these petitions. I went to various places.
Stand up!
We can definitely start showing this stuff. People phone calling, you had these petitions. You didn't have to ask. They lined up. They lined up to sign them. Of all the people I talked to, three people did not want to sign them. One just didn't want to get involved. One said that if he put his name on a petition and somebody seen it, people wouldn't want to do that. And then one person said that he didn't like the idea of having the city pay for the mowing. Other than that, everybody was in favor. Like I said, they stood up and come to me. I didn't have to go around and give them. The city is clearly in favor of keeping it the way it is.
Thanks, Alan. Dean Turk.
Thank you. I am the county board chair, but I'm here speaking as a citizen of the city of Richland Center and taxpayer. I do live on Seventh Street, not that far away from Story Field. I'm a graduate of RCHS, did football up there under Coach Abidas Rip. I was a manager, not a player, but still spent a lot of time up there. But that was then. This is now. Now it's an empty grass field, and the city needs housing, and we have before us a proposal that would be the envy of any other community. A developer willing to flip the bill for all the infrastructure, typically they want six or seven figures of incentive to do something like this. We have a chance to create eight very nice duplexes. That's 16 homes for families who don't want to live in a park. And I think it creates activity, it creates economic activity. Obviously, it creates tax base, which will benefit the county, the city, the school district. We don't have growth like this happening. Our percentage of net new construction, which affects the revenue that we can generate, has been flat, and one year was even negative. And so we need this kind of growth, this kind of development, just to fund the services that we already provide, let alone funding any new services. City and county finances, I know, are going to be very difficult in the next few years. If we don't have this kind of growth happening, it gets that much worse. With this opportunity before us, I think we absolutely need to take advantage of it and move forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Ellen Evans.
I really have nothing prepared, not knowing if we could speak tonight or not. What I do have in my hand are the petitions that were signed. We have 160 in one bunch, we have 59 in another, and we have 348 online petitions with 567 being our total. So we have, I don't know, hand that to you, Jason, so you can make it official that we've turned those in. Now, I know that the campus has been brought up as another location. I am not against new housing by any stretch. I'm very much for new housing in Richland Center. I do think that the campus should be explored. I don't know that the developer was approached by anyone in any way, shape, or form about the campus. I think that we would be remiss if we do not do that. Oh, there you go. And, you know, I'm just not in favor of ruining Story Field. I love the green space. I have property up there. I purchased it because of the green space being there. There you go. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Ellen. Mike Brenninger.
City Council, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your service to the city of Richland Center. My name is Mike Brenninger. I own two homes in Richland Center. I'm the former chair of the Richland Economic Development Board. I graduated from the University of Wisconsin-Madison with a bachelor's degree in economics with my senior project focused on how Richland Center can prosper economically. That was in 1978. I sympathize with the neighbors of Story Field. If I lived near Story Field, I would likely prefer the open area to remain an open area. The city of Richland Center is at a crossroads. We are in a housing crisis. People working in Richland Center are buying homes in Reedsburg, Spring Greenie, Sock City, and elsewhere, because they cannot find land to build a house on or buy a house or rent in Richland Center. There have been professionally conducted studies by Southwest Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission that verify this desperate need for housing. I've consulted with real estate agents that say good homes listed at a fair price sell in only a few days in Richland Center, because housing is so difficult to get. Keep in mind what you decide today will affect Richland Center for years to come. Having served on the Economic Development Board, I know firsthand how difficult it has been to find land for the construction of new homes. I led the effort to develop the UW-Richland land four years ago, when the campus might have been saved. To develop it now would be several years before it could happen. I'm asking you to make a decision to benefit the community at the difficult expense of those who will no longer have green space near their homes to enjoy. There is no personal financial gain for me in the approval of this housing project, but for the sake of Richland Center and its future, I ask you to approve the project.
Thanks, Mike. Deb McCoy.
Hi. I'm Deb McCoy. I'm the registrar of the East for Richland County and a resident that lives half a block from Story Field. And as others have said here, I have no problem with... And as others have said here, I have no problem with having housing come to Richland Center. It's very important for our economy and to bring other professional people to the area. The only problem is, is that Story Field has so many usus for the residents of the city, not just the people that live next door like I do. But we see people come there every day to use the green space, to play sports, to hit golf balls, to walk, all the things that the other people mentioned. And I see this firsthand. And the problem for me specifically is not about the housing. It's about having the space to be able to do the things that make us a healthier town. And I see plenty of properties that are vacant that could be developed. And I know a developer isn't going to buy non-continuous parcels, but the campus space really would be a much better place. It would be easier to develop and less expensive. This developer's going to have a lot of money wrapped up in utilities and things because of the infrastructure that's already there under Story Field. But that's beside the point. I know that this is probably a done deal, and I was involved in the first round when the plans were put out for the need for it to check out. And it looks like a very nice development. But I do have another problem with this. When we were reassessed recently, we didn't know that this project was going to come to happen here so quickly. My assessment went up $104,000. My property alone went to $28,000 for my lot. My lot is 2 tenths of an acre. This property is 5.6 acres. And this property being sold for a dollar, it makes me very angry that my assessment is so high and this project is selling for a dollar. It's going to be a long time before the city's going to recoup the expenses they've already put into this project, I understand. But as a taxpayer, I'm very unhappy about this. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Deb. Mike Brenniger.
Mr. Mayor, City Council. Yeah, I think everyone thinks this is a done deal, or a lot of people think this is a done deal. And to hear that, you know, someone told kids not to use Story Field, you know, that's a little sad. Muscatay, or, I'm sorry, Richland Center does have a housing crisis right now. But we also have over 100 units that are under construction, right? We're talking about 14 or 16 in a beautiful green space in town, okay? It's a country song played on WRCO. This guy says that he's a home builder, that he builds homes in neighborhoods. And he's talking to a farmer who wants to buy his farm. You know, and most of us have heard that song. It's kind of a tearjerker. Make no mistake, you're not building a neighborhood here, you're destroying one. And if you vote for this project, I hope you lose a little sleep over that. Because it's a beautiful space. I know you've been up there, I mean, everybody's got a connection to it somewhere along the line. And, yeah, okay, property taxes went up. Yeah, mine went up over 100% up there. You know, I know my taxes are going up. I don't have an issue with that because, you know, we need good schools. But you've got 100 units going up right now between the Panorama and other places here in town and out there, what's the name of it? Just north of town, Allison Park. You know, so there's a lot of things going up. Frankly, I live in Muscatay, and I would love to poach this project. I've already been in contact with Doug Enke about this. We've got over 30 acres in town with 60 lots available. Now, yeah, that doesn't help the issue here in Richland Center, but for the local area, it helps. And that's a much better place to build, you know? Civil engineer in Madison that says that Story Field's a bowl and it's a dome to build there. And I guess I would agree with that. I, you know, this is a tough, this is a tough decision that you have to make, but, you know, once it's gone, it's gone. Let's not be in paradise.
Chris Younger.
It records it.
I just want to say that, like I said last time, I'm completely against the whole building of Story Field. And I just want to piggyback off what this gentleman said. Each one of you, all the men that are sitting up there, you should be voting by what your constituents want, not by what the mayor wants. If you guys are really up there to listen to what your constituents want, then you would be voting no for this project. Because 90% of your constituents, you have it right there, she said 500-plus no for this project. But you guys are voting for what the mayor wants, not because of what your community wants. And that's sad. That's really sad. I just want you guys to know that. It's a disappointment.
Okay, and then Rod Perry.
And everybody remember that at voting time.
Hey, Rod Perry. I live at 445 East Hazeltime Street in the city. When we moved to Hazeltime 50-plus years ago, on the corner of James and Hazeltime was an empty lot. They tore an old house down, and kids from the neighborhood played on that lot every day. One day, Mr. Moon, who owned it, sold the lot. There were no, there was no uproar, no petitions, or anything else. Our kids had to go a little farther for their recreation. We didn't even think about protesting. And I know that Story Field is loved by the neighborhood, but this project is so much for the city to gain. And you can talk about the apartments going up, but that's not single-family housing. That's apartment living. We need single-family housing. And that's what we'll get with this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's everybody, all the sheets that I had. Did we miss any? Okay, to cover a couple of points, this has been done the way everything has been done. Anybody who wants to meet with me after this, just hang out. I can explain to you how this works if you want to run for a city council next time. I'll tell you how to do that. It's not being done any differently than anything else has been done. Next, we literally just had a gentleman stand here and tell us that he'd love to poach this for another town. People have asked me why we're meeting tonight. The reason we're meeting tonight is because the builder politely, not threatening at all, let me know that there were two other communities that had reached out and that they preferred this project, but they simply wanted an answer, that's all. So they could plan accordingly if they're going to be here or move on if they're not. That's it. So I am the one who chose this. I'm the only one with the authority to call a special session, and I did that simply so whatever the council chooses, which is their prerogative to do, they at least get a chance to vote one way or the other before this investor has invested in another town. And whether you are for or against this project, I think that's the responsible thing to do. I hear all the time about what the city didn't get at one point or another in the past because people were too slow or didn't do things right. And I simply wanted this council to have a chance to vote before we were told we had no choice to make because they moved to another town. That's it. That's the whole story. All right, so that puts us on items for discussion and possible action. Story Field pre-development agreement. Before I open this for discussion by the council, I'm going to have Mr. Glassbender briefly, if you have, can we get the microphone to Jason? Do you have it? Okay, so that everybody understands what a pre-development agreement actually states, what it does.
Okay, so you do have cover sheets there, and I believe they're displayed on the screen. And the pre-development agreement is on the city's website under common council agendas. So it's there for public viewing, as well as the other documents that are included in this packet, which include the letter that was sent to the potential developer by myself on behalf of economic development, the pre-development agreement with all of the details there. And then in the packet is also the plans that were developed now over four years ago as conceptual plans for development of Story Field. Some of the main points that are in the pre-development agreement include things like the developer would construct all required public infrastructure, which means the roads, utility lines, stormwater, sidewalks. They would complete the project within 24 months of the land transfer, which is a very rapid build. And one that then, you know, allows the city, the county, and the schools to begin the collection of property tax. And it provides the homes in the community that there is a substantial shortage of. That's been a problem since day one when I started with economic development with the county and the city. The development agreement also meets all applicable design and permitting standards. That's part, they're agreeing to meet all applicable design and permitting standards. That means there's, the DNR would be involved, the state, we have to abide by all state statutes, we have to abide by all ordinances, as well as we work with consultants that serve the city and serve contractors all the time to make sure that things are being done in best practice and with best standards in mind. And they've agreed that the type of building that would be delivered is a zero-step accessible housing, which is a common request that we hear in the community. So those, I think, are some of the main points from the pre-development agreement.
Okay. So at this point, I will open this for discussion by the council. Point of order, Mr. Mayor. So in order to open the matter for discussion, we need to do a motion for reconsideration of the previous motion to postpone it until the October 7th meeting. Okay, say that again. So basically, you need to claw back the decision to postpone the discussion until October 7th before you can talk about it today. So simply entertain the motion to... Reconsider the question of postponement to October 7th. Entertain a motion to do so. That was Karen. Is there a second?
Second.
That was Mr. Downs. Any discussion on that point? Hearing none, or in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion is carried. Fair enough. On the Story Field pre-development agreement, I'll open this for discussion by the council. Any questions, comments, or if anyone would like to make a motion, you may not do so.
Motion to approve the Story Field pre-development agreement as presented to the council.
Motion from Mr. Downs. Is there a second?
I second it.
Seconded by Mr. Martin. Okay, open for discussion. I'm going to start with a question, actually, a little unorthodox. Mr. Turk, you've heard it several times tonight, the campus property. I've asked about this once on end, but what's the status?
And we'll be talking about this at the community forum on the 29th. The campus is a big chunk of land, yes. Is it ready to be developed? No. There are buildings in the way that in all likelihood are going to have to be demolished. Couple of them are in terrible shape. We just talked about that tonight at our campus reconfiguration committee meeting. We had our independent architects come in and assess them. And now we're working with SEH as a developer to come up with a process for soliciting development ideas for the property. Their initial thought was it needs to pretty much get level before developers could really be interested in it because the land is the valuable piece, not the buildings that stand out there. So with that in mind, you know, we're a good, you know, couple of years away from seeing anything really be done out there to dig a hole or anything like that. We've got to clear up all these issues first, and we want to have a good plan for development of the whole property. So while this project is ready to go, the campus would not be ready to go right now. It's going to be a while, unfortunately.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to amend the original motion. I'd like to make a motion that rather than approving this as presented, that the city shall retain ownership of the green space that is approximately 1 and 1/2 acres to include the sliding hill, water retention basin, green space that's designated on the one picture, and the booster station. And that this green space would become a part of the park system. Furthermore, I would like to have the subdivision for the park be memorialized in some fashion with the Story family name. If you read, that's my motion.
You made Mr. Downs to amend, or can Rachel just do that the way she just did that?
She can, so she's moving to amend the, Mr. Downs seconded.
All right, so we got Mr. Walter. All right, so we have an amended motion from Alderson Schultz, and a second by Mr. Downs. All right, so Dave, so you're telling me two years?
Possibly. I couldn't tell you for sure.
Okay. Thanks. All right, any other questions or comments from the council? Yep, go ahead.
I just simply believe that whatever decision we make tonight, we will leave some disappointed as a result of what we have decided. And so I believe the best that I can do sitting in this chair reflects my ability, to the best of my ability, to determine what's best for this city, what's best for all of its residents, and its future.
Thanks, Ron. Any further questions or comments from up here? Yep, Melanie Downs, go ahead, Alderson Walters.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. I guess with Rachel's amended motion, I would just ask for some clarification from perhaps Mr. Glassbender on what the implications of that would be. Was the original intent of the pre-development agreement for the city to retain portions of Story Field or not?
I mean, it's, so the pre-development agreement is really that. It outlines some very high-level elements of an agreement so that we can find out if the council is willing to move forward and allow the staff to move forward with all of the finite detail that's necessary for a development of this nature. As we move forward, of course, we're spending more staff time and energy, and so it's very important that we know at this point whether or not you're interested because we don't want to be spending tax dollars irresponsibly. So to answer your question, it is anticipated at this time, and I can't answer it with certainty until we move through the full development agreement process, but it's anticipated that the street and all the infrastructure would be dedicated back to the city and would be maintained by the city. It's also anticipated that the stormwater basin would likely follow, the storm retention basin would likely follow. Beyond that, it's up to the council, and it's at their prerogative, how much land is held within the park system or dedicated as green space. There is an ordinance that says that, that makes a suggestion, in this case, it would be 0.6 acres. So your amended motion is asking for a much larger consideration than that. However, it's the council's prerogative whether to execute at the formula of 0.6 acres or the council also may, at their prerogative, say, we don't believe it's in the best interest of the city to maintain green space in that area because we have green space in other places. So it really is at the council's discretion, and these details do need to be worked out in the process of developing the full development agreement.
Ellen, did that answer what you're asking?
It did. I'm just wondering if we're getting too specific at this point with the motion because an actual developers' agreement will have to come back before us to approve, correct?
That's correct. This is just a pre-development agreement. This doesn't finalize anything.
Right. And so that's why I'm wondering if maybe the amended motion is a little bit too specific, that we're just looking at doing the pre-development agreement and during this process than these other, I guess, wishes of the council. and during this process, then these other, I guess, wishes of the council could be worked out before we finalize the development agreement. Is that incorrect statement, or is that correct?
Well, in this case, we have the motion and the second, as we would on any other topic, so it's again the prerogative of the council to go either way on that motion or to amend that.
So we're debating the motion to amend currently?
Yeah. Our question was, were we too specific opinion, I guess, was that too specific a motion? And that's not up to me.
I made the motion to amend this, to make sure that there would be green space in the event that the original motion passed. And I wanted the green space to retain ownership by the city, so that the city could still, city citizens could still use some of the green space that they are used to using. It's not what many of you have expressed as an interest, but I wanted to make sure there was a compromise in place in order to save some portion of the field. 1 and 1/2 acres is about the size of 1 and 1/2 football fields, just to help you visualize that. And it would also mean that the city would have the liability if there would be any injuries on that area. And I know that's more specific, but I wanted to make sure that it was not overlooked as this agreement would go through the negotiation process.
Well, that's a great point. If there's sledding on that hill, and I'm sure there will be sledding on that hill, then the portion of the hill that's open for that, then somebody owning part of that is not going to want liability. They're going to want that to happen on public land, so that makes a lot of sense, actually, if this happens, that the city would own that portion, for that reason if nothing else. I mean, it just makes sense. On that point, and the thing I heard, I talked to several young people in town about Story Field, and the one thing that mattered to them, and we're talking high school kids, on the whole thing, the only thing that they kept coming back to was the sled hill, and that's part of why I think you just made that motion, I would guess, is because of that. And I think that does make sense. I mean, the city has what's called recreational immunity by state law, so for instance, if somebody fell off a, swaying a slide at the park and fell down, they can't sue the city. That's a state law. While on public ground like that, if there's sledding, that also apply, and if it's private property, that's a different deal. So that makes sense to me. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Just one point on being specific with the amount of acreage. We don't have official surveys done, so there is a chance that maybe it could be through negotiations that it was actually 1.49 acres, or 1.67 acres. So without having that official survey work, it is a little bit difficult for us to get to that final development agreement with a certain specific number associated.
That's what I had, approximately, in the motion.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, just one point of clarification. The pre-development agreement currently states that the city agrees to sell the land necessary for the development. That is not a decision made unilaterally by either party. Both of us, both the city and the developer, will need to agree as to what the land, what land is necessary for the development. So even absent the amendment on the motion here tonight, the council would, could understand that they will have the opportunity of declaring the sled hill not necessary for the development and retaining that as part of the actual development agreement, once we do have the full survey completed. And that way, there's an opportunity for the developer to respond if that in some way changes the plans or something like that.
May I?
Yeah, of course.
I wanted this to be more than just the sled hill. The ordinance says that when there's a development, there needs to be at least 6 tenths of an acre of green space to go along with that, and that's not very much when you look at that area. And that's why I made my amendment, to make sure that there was a maximum amount of green space that would remain undeveloped, or developed into a park, or whatever the city decides.
Okay, Mr. Gull, any concerns up there? Utility, infrastructure, ability to support water, sewer, electric, anything?
No, been covered through previous projects. When we did that project there, and then electric-wise, we're ready to.
Okay, Mr. Glassbrunner, Veerbicker Engineering came up with this plan after they were up there, we were supposed to talk about irrigation, things like that. Any concerns with what's underground, underground, any of that?
Veerbicker Engineering is a well-respected and qualified engineering firm, and in their review of all the elements that were on site, they have documented anything that is a challenge to work with, and have clearly indicated to us on numerous occasions that they believe that this conceptual plan can be executed.
Okay, further questions or comments from the council?
Good question. So with the more specific motion that we had in front of us, and what you had just said, Attorney Wendell, so we still will have some variances to, some leeway to negotiate that further, or because we are being so specific, allowing maximum amount of green space and the 1.6?
I said approximately 1.5.
1.5. Does that narrow our position to the point of this project would not happen?
So there's two ways that you can look at it. One is by passing this, the intent of the council would be to bind itself to those conditions with some flexibility as allowed by the word "approximately." That means that, no, we would not, that would have to be kind of designated in negotiations. The other would be that it is more of a statement of intent, a statement of position, directive and guidance to the staff as they enter into negotiations in the development agreement. The downside, of course, that being the council's not really standing for anything with the motion. So ultimately, it's up to you whether or not you want that eventually to be binding on you. As a power of the council, however, adopting the development agreement, if those terms deviate from this pre-development agreement, would override anything that was amended here tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, further discussion, questions, comments from the council? Melanie, go ahead.
So when we vote, are we voting on the amendment, or what exactly are we voting on?
On the amendment.
So if the amendment is voted down, then are we going back to the original motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, further questions or comments? Okay, would you repeat that, so there's no confusion among the council? They are voting on...
The motion to amend the underlying motion, so adding the specificity as to the areas to be retained by the city, as well as the naming directive.
Okay, further discussion from the council? Yep.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Brian.
Michael, point of clarification, as our president, can you walk me through, was this amendment seconded?
Yes. Mr. Downs seconded.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Martin?
Okay, so the sled hill, we're coming up to that retention pond, that's going to have fences there, is that 6 tenths of an acre? Are we going to limit that? Is that going to be a major issue, which I've heard several people talk about, because we don't have, you know, these kids can sled playways down, now we got people running in defenses. So this is going to create an issue for that hill.
Do you want to address that, Jason?
Yeah, so that's, that is information that has been, you know, kind of expressed publicly, but that is not accurate. The engineers have indicated that this is a detention area only, it would be a depression, and engineers indicate that it is possible to do that as green grass. So the detention system is also designed to dissipate any waters that would accumulate there within 24 hours. So it's anticipated, according to the engineers, that this is supposed to cycle the water fairly quickly and result in primarily a green space, with no fences around it.
Go ahead, go ahead, okay. Further discussion? Okay, hearing now, we'll need a roll call vote.
Walters? Can she hear me? Do you want me to move on? Downs?
Aye.
Karens?
No.
Fruit?
No.
Tepley?
No.
McCarthy?
Ooh.
Schultz?
Aye.
Martinick?
No.
All right, Walters, you ready?
I vote no. Motion does not carry.
Okay, so that was on the amendment that Rachel presented. Next up?
For the discussion and action on the approval of the pre-development agreement.
We need to go back to open this to a motion again?
No, this is still a motion.
So we still have the original motion and second, which is simply to accept the pre-development agreement as it was presented. So you got it, you had it in your package, this is it written out. And again, I'm going to pause, and if anybody has questions, we need to do that now. Questions or comments on this? Okay, Melanie, Brian, any questions or comments? Brian, Karens?
No.
Okay, Melanie, Walters, questions or comments?
I just want to make sure that if we approve this pre-developers agreement, that, again, I just want to clarify, that we then have room to do some negotiation before creating the actual development agreement and approving that.
Yes.
Say that into the microphone, Mr. Wendell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion by the council, questions, comments? Okay, hearing now, we'll need a roll call vote.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Martinick?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Karens?
Aye.
Fruit?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Okay, that motion is carried, that item is covered. Next on the agenda is adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.